Okay, well, good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock. I'm Mayor Val Vanen. And I'd like to call the July 11, 2022 public hearing to order and begin by acknowledging that the land on which we gather is the traditional and seated territory of the Kansai Quatlin Masque and Senyam and First Nations. As I said earlier, I'm Mayor Val Vanenbrook, and with me tonight, I have Councillor Paul Albrecht, Councillor Terry James, Councillor Gail Martin, Councillor Nathan Paul, Councillor Rudy Surtabim, and Councillor Rosemary Wallace. I don't see her yet. I'm sure she might be coming after. For staff, we have Frances Chubb, Chief Administrative Administrator, our yes, Officer, Graham Flacker, Deputy Director of Corporate Services, Carl Johansson, our Director of Development Services. Hi, here I am, Gail, Manager of Engineering Services, Kim Hilton, our Director of Recreation, Culture, and Community Services, Paula Kuzak, our Deputy Corporate Officer, and Scott Kennedy, Fire Chief. All right, so I'll call the order of this public meeting, and it's been can be pursuant to Section 464 of the Local Government Act in order to consider the following bylaw, Bylaw 3216. This is zoning amendment number 189 and development permit number DP 05-22. It's a bylaw to rezone the properties located at 20121, 20131, 20141, 20151, 20161, and 20171, 53 Avenue from RS Single Family Residential Zone to CD 85 Comprehensive Development Zone to accommodate a five-story 93-unit rental apartment development. I'd like to thank everyone for attending this public hearing, which is taking place by electronic means via Zoom. If we encounter technical challenges during the meeting, please stand by, as we want to ensure everyone who wishes to speak is afforded the opportunity to do so. This public hearing is being livestreamed on the city's YouTube channel, and it's also being recorded and will be posted to the city's website. So if you missed it, you can watch it later. If you are watching and wish to attend this electronic meeting, you can go to LangleyCity.ca to register and join the meeting. At this public hearing, those in attendance at this meeting who believe that their interest in property is affected by the proposed bylaw will be allowed to make representations to council and shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard, respecting matters contained in the bylaw. Once in the meeting, you may use the raise hand function to indicate your wish to speak, which will automatically put you in the speaker's queue. You will be invited to speak in the order in which your hands are raised. When it is your turn to speak, staff will prompt you with a message asking you to unmute your microphone. And unmute your microphone, and you may begin speaking. Please note, the chat function will not be monitored during this public hearing webinar. Please commence your comments to council by clearly stating your name and street address. Unit numbers are not required. You will have five minutes to give us the benefits of your views concerning the bylaw. Your name, address, and comments will form part of the record of this public hearing. Members of the council may, if they wish, ask questions to you following your presentation. However, the main function of council members this evening is to listen to the views of the public. It is not the function of council at this public hearing to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw with individual citizens. Once you have completed your comments, staff will mute your microphone. Everyone shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard at this meeting. No one will be or should feel discouraged or prevented from making their views heard. Once everyone who wishes to speak has done so, I will call for speakers for a second time, at which time those who wish to speak again should indicate so by using the raise hand function. Speakers will again have five minutes to provide their views. I will then ask for speakers for a third and final time. If there are no further speakers, I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Following the close of the public hearing, council may not receive any more correspondence or representations written or verbal regarding this bylaw. The public was also given the opportunity to provide written submissions for this public hearing. All submissions will be retained by the corporate officer, and copies of the submissions will be available from her on request following the hearing and shall form part of the public record of these proceedings. Ms. Kuzak, can you please advise how notification was provided for this public hearing and whether we have received any correspondence?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two newspaper advertisements for the bylaw were placed in the June 30th and July 7th edition of the Langley Advance Times. Notices were mailed out to owners and occupiers within 100 meters of the subject properties. Notice of the public hearing was also placed on the city's website and on the city's posting board on the first floor at City Hall. Two pieces of correspondence were received after publication of the agenda, so were circulated to council by email.
Great, thank you very much. So on to the business of Bylaw 3216, zoning amendment number 189 and development permit number DP 05-22. Mr. Johansson, can you please provide an overview of the purpose of bylaw number 3216, please?
Yes, thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Council. This proposed five-story 93-unit apartment building utilizes a new laneway access to 53A Avenue established by previous applications to the north, which council has approved in principle. And this will enable these properties to redevelop independently while reducing vehicle movements onto and off of 53 Avenue, which is a school zone road segment adjacent to Nikko Nikko Elementary. If this application is approved, and it will also include new sidewalks on 53, additional on-street parking or maintaining on-street parking that's there, and also contribute to a new crosswalk on 53 Avenue. The proposal was well received by the Advisory Design Panel, or ADP, and the applicant has incorporated the panel's building, parquet, and site design and landscaping recommendations, and I believe they will be speaking to that further as a part of their presentation tonight. This application also includes numerous sustainability measures, as detailed in the report, and proposes parking variances consistent with the shoulder rates being considered for the new zoning bylaw for developments within a 10- to 15-minute walk of Skytrain. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. And I believe Kyle, you're going to speak to it. Would you like to introduce everyone here as well, or?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Kyle MacGill. I'm with Keystone Architecture as the Budget Manager on this application. I'm here with Eric Fox-Laitner, who's the Architect of Record, as well as Brian Smythe and Tim Croker with our ADI, who are the developers on the project. We thank you so much for your time. We have a quick presentation here to walk you through the proposal. Here with me as I pull up. So as Director Johansson mentioned, this is at the corner of 201A and 53 Avenue. 53 Street, rather. It's a five-story 93-unit development located at the corner in potential neighborhood with the other with other developments, consistent with other developments, rather, in the neighborhood. The unit mix varies from one beds and studios up to two beds and storage rooms in the streets themselves. And we do, we are meeting a lot covering compartments of 40% at 39.0. As we talked about the locations, we're just north of the Nikko Nikko Elementary School and Biden LeBou area. There's other, quite a few other developments of similar size and scale to this property in the adjacent neighborhoods or adjacent streets. And then we have just our transit network there showing the rapid bus route towards the east, as well as the school towards the south, and then just the city center up towards. As Director Johansson mentioned, this is tying in with an adjacent development just immediately north of the project. We are sharing an access route to. In discussion with planning, we had worked out a future access route for the projects for potential developments that come into the west in case there is interest from those parties to connect this development via the drive aisle access on the west side of the building. As you can see, we've got the parking bulge along the south there for the street parking. And and the access to the parquet is just at that northwest part of it. One of the items I wanted to touch base on was the environmental design, environmental considerations of the project. We do extensively landscape these developments. So the majority of the site, part of the building is landscaped. One item that we do, we hear quite frequently is the request for reducing island or the heat gain effect of developments like this by fully planting out the site podium, as well as providing reflective roof materials to try and, or to bring down that heat gain, the island effect that dense buildings like this can create. Just a safe view of the site plan or overall view of the site plan, we have some outdoor amenity space for that southwest corner, which is the bottom left of your of your screens there, along with the outdoor amenity space that connects to the indoor amenity space at the north center of the building. One item that was we worked with planning on was getting the PMT off of the streets and over onto the, onto the drive aisle that accesses the site itself and the parquet itself. So we've worked with that to try and get any sort of infrastructure off the street to maintain a nice planted out, a nice walkable sidewalk interface along 21A Street. The south access there has the accessible ramp coming up to it, along with visitor parking and parket entrances or parket exits around the site. Clark, are you on the line? Are you able to just take a few minutes to walk us through the landscape approach for the project?
Sure. As Kyle had noted, we've landscaped this, this site extensively. We've used nothing artificial on this at all. We've done some landscaping to mitigate and soften some of the walls along 53 Avenue. We've allowed for some grass areas for people to get out from their units and get out on their bare feet and actually touch some grass in, in this urban area. We provided some trees wherever possible that don't interfere with the underground parquet. Added some, also added some trees in between the individual patios to give some privacy for each patio on-site and on the podium. As Kyle had mentioned, we have a nice little amenity area with some community gardens, some trellises, some areas for people to sit. A nice circulation path which runs from the community gardens back around to the north area and out to the amenity area, which is located central building along the north face. We've provided along the north property line, we've provided some nice landscaping, about a meter and a half, two meters with a row of trees, which will be duplicated to the development going on to the north of us, and will provide some privacy, but also give some nice eyes on for anyone in the amenity area. Other than that, we, like I say, we've provided some nice grass areas on the podium, and this will all add to transpiring some moisture into the atmosphere around this building and around this urban environment to mitigate some of the heat island effects. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thanks, Clark. One item that Clark touched on, which we'll jump right into on the next slide, is the connection of the north development. So we had, during the ADP review, there was a bit of a discussion about the connection between the two sites themselves. The two sites are separate. They are their own individual properties. So we did look at this as a of how we could connect the two developments so that they spoke to one another, specifically on the outdoor amenity side of things. We've actually gone back and edited the previously submitted building application to the north and added in additional trees, similar to what we're seeing on the south side here. One item I want to point out is just the red and blue identification for those larger trees. This was intentional, and we actually updated the, the application for that north property to basically have similar language between both sites. There was commentary from the ADP of if we could connect the two developments, but just from a code perspective and from a operations side of the two developments, these are two separate developments with two different managerial or two different entities between them. So we can't necessarily have a walking connection between the two spaces, but we can have visual and, and similar design between the two sites. So we've achieved that by basically creating this landscape buffer that reads as if they're one site between the two, sharing the same types of species, the same types of spacing, and a similar outdoor amenity experience between the we have additional renderings towards the end of the slides that you'll see just how we're achieving that, that design between the two sites. Here is a shadow study for the development. One of the things we want to highlight, too, is just the space in between the two buildings. We've actually pulled that south building, or the one that we're proposing tonight, closer towards 201 or 53 just to gain more space between the two buildings. We're approximately 50 feet building to building, which creates quite a bit of sunlight throughout those spaces, especially in the summertime when you want to be on that space. This is the site plan, or the, rather, the parking plan is showing that all parking is satisfied onsite in an underground parquet. We have separation between the visitor and the residential by secure gates, as well as increased visibility into that lobby, that elevator lobby. That was one of the concepts we had from the ADP is just creating visual connection into the lobby so that people can see the eyes into the space as they walk up to it. Another item that we have just on the floor plans themselves that I want to highlight was working with the ADP. We had some commentary on the bike storage that we have on the first floor there, just on, just to the left of the elevator on that upper, upper floor plan. We are providing all bike storage for the bylaw on the site. We are also providing a bike storage facility, or a bike maintenance facility, sorry, for the tenants so that there is a space for them to work on their bicycles and space to, to maintain them while storing them on, in the building themselves. We're also providing all storage for the developments. Some is in, just like I said, the elevator there that in that bottom slide, and then some is actually in the suites themselves. We have some larger units, and we're able to provide just storage units inside their units. I just done up for our typical floor and then the roof plan itself. And as we mentioned, we will be providing reflected ceiling or reflective material on the roof to bring that, that island effect. The exteriors are a use of cementitious panels, some brick trim pieces for this repeated or design, rather, with these corner features at each end, as well as a strong central corner or central feature to maintain the intensity. One of the items just to note in these areas, we do raise up the parades so that they're kind of half in, half out of the ground, but we are extensively planting it to screen it from the streets. Here's a, just a street section on the top there. That's 53 Avenue facing north. You can see that the context towards the single-family home towards the west. We do have a very increased setback as we are trying to be sensitive that are existing there currently, the single-family homes that are currently there. And then that bottom image is on 201A looking west, and you can see the connection between the, this building, as well as the one that has been previously brought forward. Again, we're just talking about some of the materials, some lap siding at the corners, different blue and gray and brown tones, along with that brick at the base throughout, that ties in the podium as well. And here are the, kind of the final renderings as we get through. So this shot at the top is along 53 Avenue looking north, and then the bottom elevation there is kind of in between the two buildings looking south is what the neighboring building will see when they look across. Again, a lot of trees. We have those increased, those larger trees that we've, we've added to the site to tie the two spaces together. And then here are a couple of renderings just of the amenity spaces themselves. On the left is that south, southwest corner, that has some communal planting. One of the items that we were receiving from the ADP was increased garden plots and increased spaces for the tenants to go out and build a plant. So we have incorporated additional platters, as well as an additional more enhanced seating area there with some trellises for shade to create this, you know, work on their gardens, visit with other people. And then the one on the left, or the right, rather, is the view looking, looking towards the east down between the buildings. So you can see that spatial separation between the buildings, creating a kind of a walking courtyard, and you'll see that the pathway on the right, on the left side of the screen is for the building adjacent development, whereas the other pathway is on ours. And one of the ends that you can't really see is underneath the planting there, there will be a wall, a physical wall, that is for the construction of the parquet. There's one, there's a bit of a complexity when it comes to the construction of the site, because the one on the north side, the other development will go in first, and then we will go against it. So we will have a wall that basically picks up the planting, picks up then retains the landscaping between the two. And finally, here's just a corner, a corner rendering showing the two developments, ours being the one on the left that we're proposing tonight, as well as the previously opposed, approved developments on the right, just the connections that we have to the streets. We run that brick all the way down around and wrap the corners so that we have a nice interaction between the sidewalk and the street itself. The building itself. That is the end of our presentation of this. Eric, did you want to mention anything before we jump off?
No, thanks, Kyle. No, I think the only one thing I want to mention about the exteriors is you can see how the facade is broken up so that the building doesn't appear so tall along the street and along those amenity spaces. So those brick areas on the, on the ground floor actually makes the building feel at, when you're at grade, like a one or two-story building. So there's been some effort in the elevations to match with the neighborhood, but also to bring the scale down.
And thank you so much for your time. We're welcome for questions.
Great. Well, thank you very much for your presentation, gentlemen. All right. So Ms. Kuzak, can you please advise if there's anyone in attendance electronically at this meeting who wishes to speak to Bylaw 3216?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are currently no members of the public in attendance.
Okay, I'll call for a second time for speakers on Bylaw 3216.
No speakers.
Okay, and I'll call a third and final time for speakers on Bylaw 3216.
No speakers, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Seeing no speakers, do any members of council have any questions regarding Bylaw 3216? Councillor Paul, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and to the mayor, to the applicant. I just wanted to say thank you for working on that courtyard. I know that was something that was really important for the design panel, and it looks really well put together. So thank you. My other question is, and I do understand that everything is built to code, but I know that we do things above code all the time in Langley City. So my question is, there are a few units where you have the living room right next to the bedroom, so you could have someone's TV right next to someone's bedroom when they're sleeping. I know there was an applicant at 200 Street and 56 who commented that they could put something like a rez bar in those couple of situations, just to help further with sound attenuation, because it is a real issue. I was wondering if you've considered that in this application or would consider that as you get to the building stage. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Councillor. One of the items I wanted to mention on, in the presentation as well, was we do have an extra wall that we add on these developments behind the kitchens themselves. It doesn't run the entire length of the unit, but it does run behind the kitchens where we run the mechanical drain piping in, so it's not inside the party walls itself, which definitely, that's a component that reduces the actual transmission between the buildings. Not having that continuous pipe basically breaking up and impeding that improves the sound transmission between the suites. Another item I want to just mention that the type of wall assembly that we do use, based on the seismic requirements of the developments actually exceeds the BC Building Code requirements for the technical STC rating of that. So there are enhancements to the development and to the wall assemblies that we, we do provide in this, in this building, as with the previous one as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Albrecht.
Oh.
Hey, thank you. Thank you for your presentation tonight. Appreciate that you've addressed a lot of the concerns that were raised earlier. So one comment I have is I try to encourage development to try to tap into local goods and services, try to support local economy. So I would really encourage you to do that in your business plan. And then one thing, I just want some clarification on. Parking is always an issue until we get transit in here and people can start downsizing and getting rid of some of their vehicles. So I just want to get clarification that each unit will be provided at least one parking stall at no additional cost, like that will be factored into the rent of the unit. Is that correct?
Ryan, do you mind, or Tim, do you mind?
I will now.
Yeah, Tim Croker here. Not sure if you can see me or hear me. So generally in Langley, on if this one stays as an apartment, like for rent, a rental apartment, they in Langley, when the buildings that we manage and other ones that we've looked at, the competitors, the parking stalls are charged separate from rent storage as well.
Okay, thank you for that. I guess that's part of the problem why we're having so much on-street parking. So, okay, thank you.
If I may also just jump in there, there are quite a number of parking stalls so that each unit is able to have onsite parking, and what separating the parking from the rent does is allow people to, who have no cars to not pay extra, and people who have multiple cars to choose to have that. So it is still addressed onsite. It's just addressed in a more flexible way.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other councillors with questions? Seeing none, I do have a few questions. So I know you were talking about the roof with the reflection, the heat reflection. Have you thought about doing solar panels on top? Is that coming?
At this point, we are, we are not engaging the solar design for the mission.
Okay, just for future considerations, I know we've got a rental here with QRD that they just built, and they've got solar panels on top, and the other thing I would ask about, you were talking about storage. And the other thing that I came to my mind was, is there going to be a postal storage available so that there's a locker there that people can leave FedEx downstairs and the residents can just use an app to open it and get their parcels instead of leaving it at the doors? Have you taken that into consideration?
Currently, we're providing just the standard Canada Post mailboxes, but I believe they do come with a increased size for package delivery in those developments themselves. So there'll be individuals, as well as, I think they're C-class sized parcels. So there will be the opportunity for packages to be dropped off in a mailbox area.
And not left on doorsteps to be stolen is kind of my, that's my concern. But thank you, yes. And I guess the next one is for staff. What about traffic calming? Have we looked at what, that's a very busy intersection. So I don't know, is there any sort of discussion? I know you talked about a sidewalk being paved on 53rd, which is absolutely fantastic. But I guess this is more of just a staff question for clarification for a citizen's question. So are we looking at possibly putting a light in there, a four-way stop, a roundabout? It gets really busy with traffic there, especially during school time. So I'm just wondering.
Yeah, yeah. I may be able to answer this question. Good afternoon. We are going to have a raised crosswalk in the middle between the 200 and 201A. And we will move the existing speed humps a little further apart to have enough space between the crosswalk and the, the, the two existing speed humps. And the TIA, the Traffic Impact Assessment that the applicant will provide, will also actually provide more details about the requirements to have an acceptable level of traffic coming in that area.
Okay, great. Thank you. And are we looking at implementing speed signs, solar-powered speed signs within the elementary school zones or the school playground zones?
Not at this, at this moment, we haven't thought about or even applied this concept yet.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you again, gentlemen, for your presentation. So I'm going to, a motion to close the public hearing. Can I have a mover and a seconder, please? Councillor Paul, Councillor Surtabim. All those in favor? I mean, opposed and carries. So this public hearing is now closed. This bylaw will come forward for consideration of third reading at a future council meeting. So thank you, everybody. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.